I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner Cambenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Neme.
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. I also would like to note, we also have some other people here. We have five members of the Marquette Senior High School Student Council who are participating with us as Commissioners for the evening, and we welcome them. I think if the youth are the future of our community, our community is, the future of our community is in good shape because we have some, some very capable young people joining us tonight. And, and I would like to express my appreciation and the appreciation of my fellow Commissioners. Thank you. The next item is note of agenda changes. Any changes to the agenda, Commissioner Reynolds?
I motion we move Resolution fourteen point zero nine eight up before presentations.
Okay, is there support for that? Commissioner Coyne? It's been moved in support, moved resolutions, the resolution honoring the support provided to Sanaa Zinazami to the first item on the agenda before presentations. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Is there now, should we take that as approve the agenda also? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Commissioner Cambenzi?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Cambenzi to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, no. The eyes, or the yes have it. The motion is passed unanimously. Announcements, we've got a whole bunch of boards and committee openings. I'm not going to read them all. Some of you have heard, we'll make some, some progress on it tonight as we make some appointments, reappointments, but we do still have probably about, in the neighborhood, about twenty vacancies. So, we encourage citizens to, to apply for these. On the city website, there's a listing of the vacancies. There's some information about the boards and committees. And there's a nice application you can, you can fill, fill out online, you can save it, and you can also submit it directly. So, it's not one of those PDF applications that's a little difficult. This one makes it real easy for you to apply. So, we encourage people to apply. Another announcement I have is, with the extreme cold weather, we have City Hall as a warming center. And so, anyone who desires to seek shelter during the day from the extreme cold, please do so. The citizens of Marquette are happy to provide this facility. And, and to the citizens and any guests, it is the citizens, the, the people of Marquette, it's their building. So, please enjoy it if you're, you're out and it's cold, and any guests also. So, and, and I also was informed, informed earlier before the commission that citizens have asked us to ban the cold. Unfortunately, that's beyond our power. We can't do that. We would if we could, but we can't, so. The next item on the agenda is the resolution to, or, no, it's, we have a resolution first. This resolution is honoring the support provided to Sanaa Zinazami. I have a number of people from Market General here in attendance. Would you join me at the ceremonial podium, please? I'd like to welcome you all. I've got a list. I've met some of you prior to the meeting. I'm not going to remember the names, so I think I'll probably read the names and you can step forward. We have a copy of the resolution honoring your, your service and a exemplary citizen pin that we'd like to present to you. The, our commission at a recent meeting discussed the issue of, of the support provided to Sanaa Zinazami, and we are quite pleased with the support that our community provided and you people directly provided. We are, we are very proud of you, and so we wanted to honor you this way. The first is Alicia Davidson, and she is a nurse, Ms. Davidson. We have a resolution that we approved. And here is an exemplary citizen pin, and thank you for, for the service that you provided. The next is Stacy Dubord. Stacy, here's a resolution and a pin.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for your service, too. The next is Sherilyn Erickson. Sherilyn, thank you. There's a pin, and for your service. Kim Groot, right here.
Thank you.
And here's a, a pin.
Thank you.
And we have Carrie Sheldon. Thank you. Is Reverend Jarvis here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes, okay, there we go. Thank you. And here's a exemplary citizen pin for you also. And Alison Sundberg. Say, resolution and a pin, thank you. And Dr. Karen Aldavick. Resolution on behalf of the city of Marquette and a pin.
Thank you.
And Jeremy Hanson, a citizen of the city and the owner of Fosbender Swanson Funeral Home. Thank you for your contribution. And last but not least, the city's arborist, Paul Albert. Again, we, we certainly appreciate the service, and it represents our community. We're, we're very proud of that, and we couldn't have done it otherwise. Any of my fellow Commissioners, would you like to make any comments regarding this? Commissioner Ryan?
Hopefully, everybody's aware of what the group did, first of all, with, with the care they provided and, and also with the efforts they went through to contact this young woman's family in, in Iran and to allow them to at least come into her hotel, her, her hospital room. And, and, and all the things that were done are outstanding. The thing I wanted to say is that, you know, over the last years, the city of Marquette and the Marquette area has received all kinds of outstanding awards. We've been recognized as a livable community, an all-American community, hiking, biking, whatever, community. We've also received amazing recognition around the world for the action of the people standing here today. And I, I think this means more than all the other rewards because this speaks to the heart of Marquette. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And once again, please accept the appreciation of the city of Marquette and on your exemplary service, and so we have named you exemplary citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is...
Your Honor, did you want the clerk to read the resolution?
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a resolution honoring the support provided to Sanaa Zinazami. Whereas on December ninth, two thousand and thirteen, Sanaa Zinazami, a native of Tehran, Iran, living in Dollar Bay, was transported from Portage Health Hospital in Hancock to Market General Hospital due to the severity of injuries suffered as a result of an alleged domestic assault. And whereas Sanaa was placed on a ventilator and declared brain dead shortly after her arrival. And whereas nursing staff from the intensive care unit at Market General Hospital quickly sought to inform Sanaa's family about her condition, knowing full well the myriad of potential challenges in making such a contact. And whereas nursing supervisor, Gail Bradley, intensive care unit register nurses, Alicia Davidson, Stacy Dubord, Cheryl Erickson, Kim Groot, Carrie Sheldon, Amy Sanamore, and Megan Spalding sought to, and obtained contact information for the family of Sanaa and were able to successfully video chat with her father and sister, whom, whom were eternally grateful for the compassion and extra effort taken by these women in Sanaa's final moments. And whereas Jeremy Hanson, the director of Fosbender Swanson Funeral Homes, had experience performing traditional Islamic burials, was able to obtain an Islamic shroud and other material from a colleague so that proper funeral and burial could be performed. And whereas hospital chaplain Reverend, Reverend Leon Jarvis contacted two female Muslim physicians to properly clean and shroud Sanaa and read Muslim prayers over the casket. And whereas city of Marquette sextant, Paul Albert, identified a section of Park Cemetery that was previously untouched to officially designate as the Islamic section of the cemetery, whereas Muslims may be buried in accordance with their faith and established, and established an appropriate final resting place for Sanaa. And whereas the plot that Sanaa was buried in was donated by the city of Marquette, and the funeral service, gravestone and casket were paid for at the request of Alison Sundberg, Market General Hospital, by a state crime victim fund with cooperation from Fosbender Swanson Funeral Homes. And whereas in spite of other differences which may divide communities, human compassion in the face of tragedy unites the hearts and minds of the residents of Marquette who stand in condolence with the family of Sanaa who, to ensure she will be remembered. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Marquette City Commission does hereby express our appreciation, pride, and gratitude for Market General Hospital's nursing staff and the intensive care unit, nursing supervisor, Gail Bradley, Alison Sundberg, Reverend Leon Jarvis, Dr. Asma Shaheed, M.D., and Dr. Karen Aldavick, M.D., Jeremy Hanson, director of Fosbender Swanson Funeral Homes, and Paul Albert, sextant of the city of Marquette, and ask all Marquette area residents to join in honoring these outstanding citizens dated this twenty-seventh day of January two thousand and fourteen, and signed, Robert Neme, mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Now we'll move to presentations. The first presentation is by the Harbor Advisory Committee. We have Chairman Robert Frazie to...
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but I think it's, since it's a resolution rather than a proclamation, we probably have a motion.
Prove it by vote?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the resolution.
Commissioner Coyne?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Coyne, to adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, no. The resolution is adopted. Now we'll move to presentations. Harbor Advisory Committee, a presentation by Chairman Robert Frazie.
All right, good evening, everyone. Dave promised me this was going to come up here, so I guess while I'm waiting for it, there it is. Again, Bob Frazie, I'm currently the Chair of the Harbor Advisory Committee for the city of Marquette. Just here to give my annual report on some of our accomplishments and things we've done in two thousand and thirteen, and some of the things that we're moving forward with as we move into two thousand and fourteen here. Again, just a quick background and a quick snapshot of our committee and what we do. We currently have slated for seven members. Currently, like I said, myself on the chair. Mike Conley is currently our vice chair. Sally Davis is our secretary. Our current staff liaison is John Swenson, who is the associate director, or assistant director of community services of Parks and Recreation. We've held thirteen meetings in two thousand and thirteen, and we also had one special meeting that we put together to do some strategic planning to figure out exactly where we want to move forward and how we want to move forward with some of the harbor development for the city. Just a quick snapshot of our purpose. Again, established pursuant to the city commission within formal powers, duties, and procedures. Harbor Committee advises the city commission on harbor development regarding both pleasure craft and commercial vessels and on, of course, the operations of both our Presque Isle, Cindopon marinas and our launch facilities. Again, we have currently seven members serving three-year terms. Actually, correction on that, we were slated for seven, but we've had actually one vacancy for a few months now. We meet third Tuesday of each month at five o'clock, with the exception of November and December. During the summer months, we meet down at Cindopon Marina in the dayroom, and during the winter months, we meet here at City Hall in room one oh three. A few accomplishments for two thousand and thirteen that I wanted to kind of focus on for tonight. A big one, of course, is, as you've heard a lot about, was the Presque Isle Marina project. As you know, we've kind of done a multi-year phased project with this, and I'm not going to take time tonight and get into each of the phases as I've, as I've presented that to the commission many times. However, I just did want to point out, we do have our first phase of that project completed in two thousand and thirteen. We did complete the dredging phase, which was the initial phase of the marina. We felt that it was an important initial phase because realistically, none of the other phases can even get started until we get it dredged and, and boats can safely move in and out of the marina, so. And that was a pretty big accomplishment, and of course, moving forward and making sure other, the future projects move forward. Mooring field project, this again was a, the mooring field is kind of tucked right into the corner of the break wall, kind of over by the Coast Guard Station. You know, we've been working on this project actually for a few years since I've been on the committee. One of our, the main reason why we decided to pursue this project was, most of all, some public safety interests. There's numerous issues with boats breaking free from their own moorings that they had down there. The city really had no way of knowing exactly what type of mooring they had. Boats broke free, ran aground, and had to wait for commercial salvage to take them off. Our committee kind of took on the project to try to formalize the mooring field, not get rid of it, and not develop it. It meant as any kind of a punishment or anything to anybody mooring down there, but we wanted to make sure that there's proper anchorage for the boats and, and actually register everybody with the city. So, if something did happen, we knew who to contact. Our accomplishment for this year, we finally got this project done and completed. In the spring of two thousand and thirteen, the Market City Police Scuba Team did an excellent job at getting all of our buoys placed. They did a good job getting them all in the right place and getting those done. And that was actually a, a real capstone project for us because that's, that was really marked the completion of this project. So, thanks to the Market City Police Dive Team for doing that, they did a great job. And then, of course, all the admin, administrative efforts, I guess you'd say, fell on the, on the marina manager, who also did an excellent job at getting this project going. And we had a total of eighteen moorings rented out of twenty-one placed. So, we had, we had quite a bit of people come back and return. Although there wasn't associated fee with it, we, most of the, most of the boating interest that was down there in the past returned, and I think they were happy with it as well, with some of the improvement, improvements that were made, so. Revised updated harbor master plan. In two thousand and twelve, when I gave my presentation, in fact, I think it was Commissioner Don Ryan mentioned to me in my questions and comments section of, has the Harbor Advisory Committee done anything with actual strategic planning? You know, when we look and move forward and when new members come into the committee, do we really know where we want to go? Do we really want to know what we want to see in our harbor development? Although I think everybody has some idea of that, nothing is really looked at or put into place. So, we decided to, to take on the project of setting out a little bit of a strategic plan. You know, it's hard to really look forward into the future, especially years into the future, and really nail down any dates and specific funding, obviously, but... So, what we decided to do in two thousand and thirteen, that was our, one of our projects for that year, we decided to update what was called the Harbor Master Plan. For those of you who aren't familiar with that, it was a plan that was put together in two thousand and three, and it was actually an excellent plan, and it was put together very well. It encompassed not only the Presque Isle, Cindopon marinas, but it actually really encompassed the entire waterfront as a whole, from, you know, the footprints on land, like vendors and different things like that, to the actual marinas and places for transient boaters to come in and moor up. So, we basically took that Harbor Master Plan, which hadn't been looked at since twenty thirty, two thousand and three, and I think we realized it quickly because there were some projects in there we were actually able to delete because we've already accomplished it or moved on from that. One of them being the Presque Isle Marina and moving forward with that project. So, we went through, updated the Harbor Master Plan. Like I said, we removed some items from it, we added to some. Some things were already done, some things not realistic because of maybe some different direction the city's gone and their, and their, and their planning as they move forward as well. So, another thing we also did was, we made a motion to put that Harbor Master Plan into the agenda, into the future agendas of the Harbor Advisory Committee, to every year, look at that and make any changes, updates, or maybe even, you know, pick even other projects to start moving forward with, from that, from that plan. So, it isn't kind of forgotten like it has been in the, since, like I said, I, you know, I've seen it before, but it hasn't been something that we've regularly looked at since two thousand and three, so. Recommendation for pump-out fee increase, that was something we looked at when we did our fee structure for our slip rentals. It hasn't been increased in years, so we made an increase on that. Support of community boathouse. This year, we received a presentation from the local rowing club, and they presented to build a community boathouse on our waterfront. And the purpose of this boathouse is kind of for non-motorized watercraft, which we've seen, obviously, an increase in use over the years. As I said, it's, the, the rowing club are kind of taking the, the initiative to go, to move forward with this. They're going to work in conjunction with the Northern Michigan University Rowing Club in using this. And I think, you know, there's also some plan as well to utilize this and use this for other non-motorized watercraft, like kayakers and things like that. And we, we received the presentation, and we definitely gave our support moving forward with that on our waterfront. Another small accomplishment, additional slip recommendation for Cindopon. We had a small, shallow, partial slip in, in the Cindopon Marina that really wasn't being utilized, and we decided to utilize that for smaller watercraft, like jet ski use, things like that, just trying to make the most of our space in that marina. Goals for upcoming year, as I bring up every year, set seasonal and upcoming marina rates. This is something we need to look at every year. The reason why we look at this every year is, we actually base these off the state's recommendations. The State Waterways Commission actually sets, I guess you'd say, a rate schedule every year. This year, it actually, for two thousand and fourteen, it has not changed at all. So, we are obviously moving forward with the, with the increase that the commission passed a couple of years ago. So, we're going to move forward without any changes this, this year, without that, the six percent increase. However, like I said, every year, it always sits our agenda in January just to ensure that we're complying with what the State Waterways Commission sets for us and how we want to move forward, and make sure there's no issues as we move forward with the rate increases for the year. Again, monitor and support the Presque Isle Marina project. This is going to be an ongoing goal for this committee for years to come. Like I said, in, in accomplishments, we finally accomplished our first goal of dredging. And we're looking at right now, fall of two thousand and fourteen, we're going to be moving on to our second phase of that project, which is going to be the, the new, the new boat launch and parking lot in that area. So, it's going to be important for this committee, although it's not a real active item every agenda for us at this point. It's still going to be very important for this committee to make sure this project's moving forward, moving forward as we planned with the phases we broke out, and making sure that permits and funding requests are, are put in a timely manner to keep this project moving. Like I said, as you know, that the marina is, is in dire condition, and we, we really need to keep moving forward with this as planned if we want to, if we want to keep that marina going, so. Another goal for this coming year, continue to advocate for proper funding for preventive maintenance and updating facilities. Well, you know, basically, you know, what, what we want to do with that, we don't want another Presque Isle Marina. Cindopon Marina is already starting to show its age a little bit. It's, it's pretty notable in certain areas down there. It's still a beautiful marina, but we want to keep it that way. We're trying to prevent what we've seen in the upper harbor. We really don't want to have to redo something like that or take on a project of, of a large project like that, especially financially. So, we are actually, this is currently on our, on our agenda, and we're currently kind of working on a policy to try to figure out how we want to move forward in, in getting funds put into making sure good preventive maintenance is done in the facilities that we currently have. Another goal reviewed and update strategic priorities for the Harbor Master Plan. I, I kind of just talked about that, but... I kind of just talked about that, but like, just real quick, goals for upcoming year, we've made a motion to continue to make sure that gets looked at every year. Committee members come and go, chairs come and go, so we want to make sure there's some, we want to make sure that gets continued with as the committee moves forward into the years and not forgotten about. And also, most of all, just kind of, you know, our, our main focus out of everything is just to work with both city staff and, most of all, our boating community in making the harbor marinas and waterfront a good experience for everyone to be at. Some issues and discussion to hit on, consider establishing a replacement improvement fund. I, I kind of just talked about that. We're, our, our committee's kind of in the process of currently working on that and working that out right now. One, one big issue and discussion item that I did want to pass on to the commission tonight, this from the committee as a whole, is the, what we'd like some more, I guess you'd say, guidance on, is the actual scope of the harbor advisory committee from all of you. And where this really comes from is when we, we're looking at strategic priorities this year and strategic planning and updating the harbor master plan, we almost kind of ran into some, no, I don't know if I'd say issues, but even kind of roadblocks as to what do we really do as the harbor advisory committee? Because, like I said, in that harbor master plan, it wasn't about just the marinas. It was about the waterfront as a whole. And we understand, there's a lot of different committees. We have Parks and Recreation, you know, Presque Isle Advisory Committee and things like that. And obviously, there's got to be a point where one committee stops and the other one begins, or you'd have committees getting burnt out and have too much work on their plate. But we're just getting, we're very conflicted as to exactly where we end, where we begin, and what we should be involved with. Like I said, it seems like for years, we've kind of more focused on the specific operations of the Presque Isle and Cinder Pond marinas and kind of the bulkhead, but as we move, as we're really looking at the harbor plan, you know, it's like, are we going to be involved in other things, like trying to make use of the pilings that we someday need to do something about? The O R Dock, you know, there's currently an engineering study being done on that. Is that going to involve us? Is it going to involve someone else? Is it going to involve someone else first and then get down to us? So it was, it was a lot of this, you know, I kind of have listed there two, non-motorized uses of, you know, the rowing club, kayaks, the boathouse, Iowa Water Trail and things like that. So it was the one issue that the commissioner, the committee definitely wanted me to bring up to the commission tonight for some more detailed guidance on as to what our scope really should be.
Thank you, Mr. Frazee. Do any commissioners or our guest commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Ryan?
On your last point, does the committee itself have a feeling as to where they would like to go? Would they like to have broader authority or more focused responsibility?
Yeah, Commissioner Ryan, I think so. I mean, I think as a whole, we definitely would like to be, we want to at least be more involved with, with some of the future projects that are obviously happening that are definitely waterfront related. Like I said, the big ones I bring up, use of the pilings. Obviously, if a future marina went into founders, we'd probably be involved, but are we involved at all in the prior planning to that? The other big one, too, is the O R Dock. That's kind of a, kind of a hot topic on, on our committee right now. Everybody's really anxious to see what comes out of that engineering study and how we want to move forward with that. And I think overall, the committee, as we looked at the harbor master plan and just everything we've dealt with throughout the past few years, you know, we just kind of feel like the, the marinas definitely, and everything on the waterfront ties into other aspects of the city. So I, I think they would definitely like to see, if not, maybe the, the overall scope increased, which I think we would like, but even maybe just more involvement with projects as they move forward, just so we're, we're involved and we're informed as to what's going on.
And, and a second question, you mentioned the Cinder Pond Marina. I'm not a boater, but, you know, we have had some feedback from some people that maybe it needs even more help than you've described tonight. What do you think about that, and where do we really stand with that marina?
I think it does. I, I think the marina overall, it's still a nice marina. I mean, but it's definitely seeing its years, and there's definitely a lot of wear and tear down there. There's definitely some much-needed preventive maintenance done on all the docking itself. That's starting to show some significant wear and, as well as, all, pretty much all the piers going out. It's definitely not in, by no means in, in any sort of condition at all close to what Presque Isle is like right now, but it definitely needs some work and it needs some, needs some attention sooner than later. And like I said, we really, we really want to see this happen and move forward, so we're not dealing with another Presque Isle issue.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
Bob, you're talking about you might be interacting with other boards in regards to the marina. Have you had any problems with, say, like the Parks and Recs or other advisory boards in carrying out what your duties are supposed to be for the harbor advisory? Has there been a problem or a conflict to date, or has it been okay?
I, I wouldn't say there's been any real significant problems or conflicts, no. But I think as we move forward, like I said, when we're looking at the harbor master plan, where do we end, where do we begin? And it would just be nice to, you know, maybe, maybe there needs to be joint committee meetings between Parks and Rec and harbor advisory when we move forward with the harbor master plan and things like that. So I, I wouldn't say we've had any problems with it, but I think what we're more concerned with is proceeding in the right direction for the future and doing the right planning. And we just kind of feel that not only an increased scope for our committee, but maybe more involvement between committees. So we're all on the same page, and we know what we're talking about would definitely, I think, help as we move forward into the future with this.
Thank you. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Two things, if I can, Your Honor. Bob, I, I do think that we probably should craft a better, tighter mission statement than what is there now. I think the existing one is probably dates from the seventies, maybe even earlier, and certainly the harbor has changed dramatically from then. So, and I don't know quite how we do that. I wouldn't suggest we do it as a committee as a whole, but perhaps ask staff to see if they can work something up that might be, again, more reflective of what's actually happening. Other item is, I noticed some discussion in the minutes about allowing a certain level of maintenance activity on the craft that are stored in the Cinder Pond parking lot. I would hope we would be able to do that, simply because, you know, maintenance on a boat is an important thing. The boats that are sitting there on the heart are largely not ones that can be moved somewhere else for any maintenance. So I think it would be very worthwhile if the committee came up with a recommended set of guidelines that would kind of allow people to know what they can do there and what they can't do there, and what the control authority, how, how the, how the marina would then manage to make sure that it's, it's not somebody doing something destructive. So I encourage you to continue to work that issue. Other than that, Your Honor, nothing. Thank you. A great presentation. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Kamenzey?
Well, I'd just like to echo that. This is always a committee that does a great job with their presentation. I feel like your minutes are very detailed. It's easy for us to follow. It is nice to hear how we can help you more. And I look at this, I, I see you and your committee as the experts, and you're advising us as far as what we need to be concerned with, anywhere from maintenance issues, you know, preventive maintenance fund. You know, basically, we want to hear everything that you're dealing with, you know, with the harbor. As you said, sometimes there's a gray area, but certainly, if you have any ideas with the O R Dock, if you know that there are additional spaces needed, people are asking for things. If you have examples of what's working well in other communities, that's, that's what we need, is your expertise. I think your committee spends a lot of time on your boats. You're the ones we look for, for that guidance, and then certainly to work with staff to make it happen. So, you know, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, you know, maybe we need to go back and revisit and, and look at the parameters, but certainly, I would think they would shift
My name is Tom Baldini, and I'm the chair of the reconstituted Fourth of July Committee.
a little bit with who's on your committee and what they can bring to the table.
And thank you for the opportunity to address the city commission and provide you with
So again, I think this is, it's a great committee.
an update on the status of our efforts to you and to the community to have fireworks
You guys have done wonderful things. It's very easy to, to chart and follow your progress, and so I just want to thank you
in our area this summer.
and, and the committee members for serving.
We intend to make a similar presentation to the boards of Chocle and Marquette Township.
Any other commissioners or guest commissioners?
We also want to thank the previous committee for their efforts in sustaining and keeping
Comments or questions for Mr. Frazee?
the fireworks going for the number of years that they did.
Hearing none, I guess I'd like to thank you, Mr. Frazee, for the presentation.
And we also want to thank the city for its cooperation in helping to make the Fourth
I'd like to thank your committee for the support. Certainly, we couldn't do our job without, without the support of our advisory committees.
of July celebration an annual success by being understanding and cooperative with
Thank you.
Thank you.
the efforts.
Okay, the next item is a presentation by Tom Baldini from the Fourth of July Fireworks
When the previous committee announced that they were disbanding, a number of us came together to organize a new group to save the fireworks for the Fourth of July.
Committee.
Our logo, as you can see here, is there.
Mr. Baldini?
We were going to have some dynamics with it, but we were not there yet. We also have a group of individuals, which I will hopefully bring up here. There they are. And the one name that we left off is Christine Basola, who did show up this evening. And we also have liaison from other people from the, the community. The committee, the committee has four purposes. First, to raise sufficient funds to play for, pay for the fireworks for 2014. Secondly, to expand the concept that the fireworks is really for the entire area, not just the city. And third, raise some additional dollars to provide funds for the 2015 fireworks and help make the transition to a sustainable model for future fireworks. And fourth, develop and have a place, have in place a sustainable model for future fireworks for the area, beginning hopefully with the 2015. When the group first met in mid-August of 2013, we knew we had to immediately begin a campaign to raise funds to contract and pay for the fireworks for this year. We believe the Fourth of July celebration in Matson Park is perhaps one of the largest continuous Fourth of July celebrations in the Upper Peninsula. The multiple-day celebration with the parade, the activities in the park, the thousands of people enjoying food and renewing old friendships, the multiple number of people in different viewing areas in the city, along US 41, M 28, out on the water, and many other areas, make it very difficult, if not impossible, to determine how many thousands of folks take the opportunity to enjoy this national holiday and especially the fireworks. As a group, we immediately contacted and contracted with Great Lakes Fireworks to provide fireworks and the shooters who professionally set off the explosives. We signed a contract for $25,000 with the first payment of $8,700 due on October 1st of last year. Without the money in the bank to pay for the fireworks, we signed a contract. We had confidence in the generosity of the area. We were able to raise the funds very quickly for the first payment. Our second payment for the same amount is due in March. It should be noted that we had to maintain our contract with the company or lose the personnel to another area or community in the country. We set a tentative date or a tentative goal of raising $50,000. Of this amount, $25,000 would pay for the fireworks, and an additional $5,000 would be used for rental of equipment, liability, and fundraising activities. The other $20,000 would be used for seed funds for the following year and the sustainability model development. We've sent out a large mailing to our business community, been in personal contact with the governmental units and fraternal groups in the area. The townships of Marquette and Chocle have agreed to publicize and promote the campaign. The city of Marquette has agreed to insert a request form in the monthly water and sewer bill, and the committee is in the process of contacting the different groups in the area, requesting an opportunity to appear before them to make a request for support and explain our sustainability model. Secondly, we have taken, we have taken the initiative to expand the concept of the Fourth of July celebration to include the townships of Chocle and Marquette. The Fourth of July celebration is a national holiday. It's a national historical significance to our country and citizens. The two townships in the city constitute approximately 50% of the entire county population, 46% to be exact. We thought it only made sense to look at this as an area activity. We have representatives from Chocle Township, Marquette Township, Marquette City, and our committee, and it should also be noted, with anticipation of sustaining this for the long term, we've also reached out to the under-40 group and have them on our committee. They've significantly reduced the median age. Third, we felt that we should try and raise some seed funds this year so that we can commit to the 2015 fireworks. We will have to sign a contract for the 2015 fireworks in late 2014, and we'll have to spend some money on developing our sustainability model. That is why we are attempting to raise the extra $20,000 this year for the future. This brings me to the fourth objective of the committee, and I must say, an idea that is very popular with the groups that we have had an opportunity to discuss this matter with in the past several months. We call it our sustainability model for the Fourth of July fireworks. Fundraising is always a very labor-intensive, and it very quickly leads to volunteer fatigue. People in this area are very generous, and they're very willing to contribute, but the annual ask requires redundant duplication and a very large investment of time and also money. We asked ourselves, can we come up with a method to permit folks to contribute with ease and not necessarily in large amounts to help us reach our goal? To paraphrase, a dollar here, a dollar there, before long, it becomes a real sum of money. We thought we could expand our donation base voluntarily, without the high cost of annually asking, and we could make this a sustainable event. The Marquette Board of Light and Power has approximately 16,000 customers, and the footprint of the Marquette Board of Light and Power services is the city of Marquette and the two townships and several other areas, but the majority of their service is in the city and the two townships. We've been in discussions with the Board of Light and Power and have made a presentation to them at their September 10th, 2013 meeting regarding the concept of using the monthly billing for the board as a vehicle to help sustain this activity. We are proposing that the Board of Light and Power use its monthly billing to provide an opportunity for subscribers to voluntarily designate that a monthly amount of money be collected for the fireworks display. A form would be included in the Board of Light and Power monthly billing, asking customers if they would like to donate a dollar or $5 or whatever amount to the Fourth of July on a monthly cycle. This amount would be added to the individual customers' bill and collected monthly. The funds would be transferred to the committee and would help deal with the very serious problem of yearly raising the funds to sustain the fireworks. The concept is simple. The details are probably not. We have had discussions with the Board of Light and Power, and they have designated one of their members to work with us to define the process and what would be required for the Board of Light and Power to implement this procedure if they could do it. We also believe that this may require the approval of you, the commissioners. In our preliminary investigations, we have found other providers in the state affording their customers this opportunity to contribute through their monthly utility bill. The, excuse me here, make sure I'm following the right way. We believe the Board of Light and Power is an ideal partner with the Fourth of July Committee for several reasons. First, the footprint of the Board of Light and Power service area is a significant part of those who enjoy the celebration for the Fourth of July. Secondly, the Fourth of July is a national holiday of great importance to all of us, regardless of one participates in the celebration of the day or not. It has great historical importance for all citizens and not just some or other identified causes that might be very meaningful, but not impacted the entire population like the Fourth of July does. Third, it would be a method for the Board of Light and Power, a municipal utility created by the people of this city, to participate in sustaining this important activity for all of the residents of the area. And fourth, it involves the city through its municipal power plant to help fund this event by using a mechanism already established to permit a number of individuals to participate in this funding of this activity by just designating a monthly checkoff. It gives the larger community an opportunity- We have had discussions with the Board of Light and Power, and they have designated one of their members to work with us to define the process and what would be required for the Board of Light and Power to implement this procedure if they could do it. We also believe that this may require the approval of you, the commissioners. In our preliminary investigations, we have found other providers in the state affording their customers this opportunity to contribute through their monthly utility bill. Excuse me here, make sure I’m following the right way. We believe the Board of Light and Power is an ideal partner with the Fourth of July Committee for several reasons. First, the footprint of the Board of Light and Power service area is a significant part of those who enjoy the celebration for the Fourth of July. Secondly, the Fourth of July is a national holiday of great importance to all of us, regardless of one participates in the celebration of the day or not. It has great historical importance for all citizens and not just some or other identified causes that might be very meaningful but not impacted the entire population like the Fourth of July does. Third, it would be a method for the Board of Light and Power, a municipal utility created by the people of this city, to participate in sustaining this important activity for all of the residents of the area. And fourth, it involves the city through its municipal power plant to help fund this event by using a mechanism already established to permit a number of individuals to participate in this funding of this activity by just designating a monthly checkoff. It gives the larger community an opportunity to participate. It doesn’t require an appropriation from the government entity; it doesn’t require tax dollars. To this end of sustainability, we are going to ask the City Commission to endorse this concept, an eventual plan that we hope to develop with the Board of Light and Power. We will be asking this because you are the community leaders, and your opinion is important. And Public Act 301 of 1969 authorizes the giving of gifts and contributions by municipality-owned utilities. As you can see from the slide, the language in the state law states that “any municipality owning or operating any public utility may authorize the giving of gifts or contributions from the operating revenue of the utility in such amounts and for such purposes as shall be determined by the governing body of the public utility to be in the public interest, subject to the approval of the legislative body of the municipality.” If you recall, our sustainability model does not ask for money from the Board of Light and Power. It asks them to permit the individuals to make a monthly donation through their monthly bill, like the United Way or perhaps Union dues. The final slide is information on how folks can contribute by either sending a check to the Marquette Area Fourth of July fireworks at Post Office Box 782 in Marquette, or make a contribution online at www.marquettefireworks.com. As the slide says, no contribution is too small. A dollar here, a dollar there will add up to the funds for the fireworks. We appreciate your time on the agenda this evening, and we are certain that we will have to have some additional dialogue with you as we move forward with the Marquette Board of Light and Power in a positive manner and to make this a sustainable activity for the community. Any questions or comments prepared to answer at this time?
Fellow Commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. Baldini, Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Well, I think this is a great idea, assuming that we can get it to go. I would certainly support this. I think you’ve got it figured out, and I think you’ve put out a vehicle that certainly makes a lot of sense as far as who are the people that really benefit from us and what could be the, I guess, the entity to help us get there. I think it’s great. I certainly would be willing to look at it if, you know, certainly if our city attorney and my fellow commissioners feel it’s the right way to go. And should it not, I think you’ve brought up some other ways. I know with even United Way, a lot of organizations partake in that. I think we could easily set up something similar to that, should your direction fail. But I really do think that you’ve kind of nailed it. So, and one question I do have for you, I just wonder how many business cards you have of different things, because I know you’re involved...
I decided to mix it up, because every time I was out talking to somebody, you start giving them, you know, “Oh, go to WW,” you know, everybody does that, so I had a card printed up when I just...
Well, as a compliment, I know you have done quite a bit for our community, so I’d just like to thank you for that and for taking this on.
Okay.
Any other questions, fellow Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Tom, I think it’s brilliant. I think the sustainability model of getting the BLP to work with us on this project is just terrific. And certainly it has my fullest support. I truly helped the BLP board. We’ll look on this in a very positive fashion, and we’ll come forward with a request for this body to approve it. Thank you very much for the work being done.
Any other comments, fellow Commissioners, guest Commissioners? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
Certainly, I support it, too. I’ve made my contribution. I challenged my fellow Commissioners to visit www.marquettefireworks.com and donate along with me and any other citizens of the city. It’s certainly a meritorious endeavor, and we are a greater Marquette community. I think we all enjoy the celebration, and we thank you for your efforts, and we thank the former committee for their efforts, too.
Thank you for your time.
And it makes the community a nice place. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation. City Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a proclamation honoring the Pigs in Heat Fire Relief Fund of Marquette County, Michigan. Whereas in the winter of 1984, county police and fire personnel searched for an idea that would raise money for a family that had been burnt out of their residence that year, and whereas Marquette is the home of the Northern Michigan University Wildcats, an NCAA Division One hockey team with a large following of hockey fans, and whereas it made sense to create a charity hockey contest between county police officers and firefighters with the proceeds used to assist victims of fire. And whereas a tradition of giving began involving the entire county community with businesses donating thousands of raffle prizes, visual, print, and electronic media sponsoring and publicizing the event, county residents purchasing tickets, and governmental entities providing logistical support, and whereas since 1984, $350,000 has been disbursed to individuals and families who experienced residential structure fires. And whereas the Relief Fund supports fire victims with three days of free motel accommodations and monetary contribution for each person affected for purchase of clothing and essential needs, and whereas tickets to the contest are still only $1 with the balance sheet kept viable by the many donations to the Fire Relief Fund from individuals, businesses, and institutions, now therefore I, Robert Neamy, Mayor of the City of Marquette, do hereby proclaim the week of March 9, 2014, as Pigs in Heat Fire Relief Week in the City of Marquette, and I encourage businesses and residents of the City of Marquette and the entire county to continue their generous support as they have over the past 31 years, which has provided such a great service to the county citizens victimized by the ravages of fire and signed Robert Neamy Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item is, section is Boards and Committees. We have listed welcoming new members. I don’t believe we have any of the new members here. Is Joseph Scanlon or Mr. Naquist in the audience? No. Former Mayor Petro did contact us, said he couldn’t make it tonight, but we expect to feed him and perhaps the others at our February 10 meeting. The next item is, we have two reappointments. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding your reappointments? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we reappoint John Kirkowski from the Marquette Area Public Schools Representative for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending January 29, 2017. Rich Rosway to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February 1, 2018. And Joel Norton to the Planning Commission for a term ending February 15, 2017.
Is there...Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. It’s been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to appoint John Kirkowski to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mr. Rosway to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and Joel Norton to the Planning Commission. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed the motion, say no. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making the comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please come to the center podium, please.
Lorena Jinkerson, 1830 Altamont Street. I’m the president of the North Country Trail Hikers Chapter here in Marquette, and I gave a presentation to you back in November. I’m here tonight with several other chapter members to answer any questions when you get to the memorandum of understanding between the North Country Trail Association and the City of Marquette for a trail town. We will be here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Jinkerson. Anyone else?
I’m Pat Friend. I am a city resident. I live at 1314 Second Street. Your Honor and members of the City Commission, I am here as a city resident and a downtown Marquette property owner to complain about the Downtown Development Authority, its mishandling of the farmer’s market, and specifically to tell you what happened to Farmer Q’s Market. Local farmers at the market who do not live in the city and do not pay city taxes have long complained about produce being brought in by Farmer Qs to sell at the market, even though they were grandfathered in as charter members of the market. Many of the products Susan and Tom Bryan bought to Marquette were from Tom’s own farm, yes, from below the bridge. The intensity of these complaints reached a fever pitch in July of last year, when the Farmers Guild, fueled by the Marquette Food Co-op, was formed. There had always been threats, but in July there was picketing, not traditional picketing with signs carried by peaceful walkers, but by roaring pickup trucks, yelling, and signs. The smear campaign escalated. Email threats, scary phone calls, slanderous lies spread. The DDA knew all about this, but there were no admonitions, no warnings, or penalties incurred. No attempts were made to discourage this activity. Tom went to the DDA to talk about the farmer’s behavior. I went to the DDA to express my concern about the Marquette people who wanted to dictate who sells my food and where it comes from. There was no response and no changes. Mona Lang said, “Let the farmers work it out for themselves.” The threats continued and became even more frightening, and nothing was done. So Farmer Qs is no more. They’re moving on, though they were the largest vendor at the market, serving hundreds and hundreds of happy customers. Four-eight, then you have successful seasons. I was on the DDA for 10 years. In all the 44 years we have lived in Marquette, owning our own downtown business, I have never seen anything like what happened here. The bad behavior was never stopped by the body, the DDA, whose mission is to help downtown business. Tom experienced finger pointing from everyone, circular finger pointing from everyone all along the line, from the city manager to the DDA manager to the DDA. As a property owner whose taxes help finance the market, I am appalled that the DDA subsidizes this behavior. The market is not self-supporting. The DDA pays 75% of the market; the farmers pay 25% of the cost. $3 a week for a booth, $35 for a season. And now the DDA feels that they have to increase revenue downtown in another way, by imposing 50-cent parking meters on Washington Street. They have shown preferential treatment to the Marquette Food Co-op by assisting them in getting a grant for their building, but have not been willing to support another viable business downtown. This decision to be complacent impacts me personally. Farmer Qs, Susan and Tom Bryan, were prepared to expand their business by buying my building on Third Street. Now that will not happen. Since the DDA is an arm of this government body, I thought you should be made aware of what has happened within our community to one of our own. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Friend. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hello, and my name is Mike Beck. I’m a resident-at-large in the city of Marquette. I wanted to address some concerns that are raised by Mrs. Friend and also some other concerns.
Yes.
I believe we need to have a physical address.
Yes.
I don’t have a current physical address, Fred. Thank you.
Do you live in the city?
Yes, I’m a resident-at-large in the city of Marquette.
You are homeless, then?
P.O. Box 104, if you guys want to send me an email.
You have a physical address, sir.
I believe I may move around, gentlemen.
You have a physical address.
You mean a mailing address?
You have an address where you live.
My voting address, a record, is 1005 Aloei. My voting registration is at 1005 Aloei. So that would be my physical address in record with the city of Marquette.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I’d like to address some concerns raised by Mrs. Friend, and also some concerns I have with the lack of transparency and ethics that the city has currently embarked upon with the recent ethics ordinance that was passed in 2013. Now, when it comes to Farmer Qs, the co-op, downtown development, I’m concerned with the delay in the commercial rehabilitation district. The co-op came before the board and asked for this in 2012. The city has just recently applied for that in 2014. We’ve missed two fiscal years there, and it appears that we may have given the co-op unfair advantage of two additional years of lessened taxes because they were inadequately capitalized to make the move in 2012 like they had intended. Now, I need to preface the rest of my comments with saying that I do, I think that the city in its aggregate has done an admirable job running and managing the city, and I do not wish my comments to be taken as ones of criticism, but more of concern. Because the commercial rehabilitation district, the granting the co-op’s preferential, about $100,000 in reduced taxes, this may be indeed the best thing for the city of Marquette. But with the two-year delay, it appears we have shortchanged the city taxpayers of two years of payments from the co-op with this delay in the rehabilitation district. Now, when it comes to the ethics ordinance, the committee passed an ethics ordinance in 2013, December 2013, that on its face appears to adequately address conflicts of interest in the city, but it falls far short. The state model ethics ordinance calls for an obzubdsman, either an ethics board or a matter of applying complaints, and annual financial disclosure statements from people that make fiduciary or administrative decisions in the city of Marquette. Now, at a time that the city and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is poised to begin to give away over $10 million in borrowed money to pay for a parking garage and $4 million in interest to help fund a privately-owned parking garage...
You need to complete your remarks.
...I would be concerned that we have fallen far short in this transparency that the citizens really deserve. The Michigan Municipal League and the Attorney General would suggest that we deserve a much more expansive ethics ordinance, and I respectfully request the City Commission to readdress this and take a look at the lack of accountability that you have left the city and the citizens with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
[inaudible]
Give them to the city clerk, please. Pat, give them to the clerk. Yeah.
I’m sorry. I was doing this.
Yep. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
[unintelligible], 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. January 13, you were told the December 16 minutes made no mention of grant money for a solar streetlight at Wright and Lake Shore. You were asked to have this added despite how few people read the minutes, yet you approved the minutes as is with no regard for the oversight. Design the minutes to serve as a useful tool instead of merely to fulfill your legal obligation. To litter our shoreline with lights is senseless considering the grand plans for our lake shore there, the removal of the rubble barrier, a roundabout, a realigned boulevard to be raised six feet and moved 300 feet west, a 3,300-foot revetment wall along the water’s edge, and a dune landscape between the trail and shoreline. That is, if we obtain grants to offset the $8.8 million cost, which is low compared to the other action alternatives. I’ve promoted this dream for the Cliff’s Dows site for 15 years. Of concern, though, is the times this board has excited the public about plans that never came to fruition, such as loft apartments and art galleries at Lake Shore site in Phase 1, mind you, and the conceptual drawings for the Commons site with the large skating pond and ample green space. We ended up with parking lots and one nice building. Or how about Hartwood, purchased as a reserve with only 356 acres destined for development? Now five of you hope to sell many times that. Or how about assurances to Southside residents that Founder’s Landing wouldn’t ruin their views? We ended up with no view, not even from the roundabout. In fact, it’s an eyesore. For the sake of being proactive, these past breaches of public trust bear mention at this early stage of the game. In all four cases, the novelty died down once reality set in, so pardon my skepticism on the excellent Cliff Dows plant plans. At the January 22 work session, a member compared the potential financing for this to our interest liability at Hartwood. The comparison isn’t analogous because Hartwood is a natural area at the edge of town, while the easily accessible Cliff’s Dows site sees thousands of passersby per day. I asked if the design allows for a beach to be added at a later time, should funds allow, and if so, how much of the roughly $4 million revetment wall would be wasted, if any. A consultant replied that the engineers would need to answer that question. If the plan sees fruition, a huge challenge will be protecting the dune swell area that will take untold man-hours to create. By all means, provide a dune trail, a safe distance from the shore, with several accessies from the west, but discourage by design trailblazing of additional paths to avoid the situation that currently impacts McCarty’s Cove, for which there are separate plans to resolve. that currently impacts McCarthy's Cove, for which there are separate plans to resolve. We've seen a plethora of great ideas presented for Cliff's Dull Lake Shore over the past fifteen years. Let us see a priceless dream come to fruition this time.
Thank you, Mr. Berito. Anyone else desiring to press the commission?
Good evening. You're in Malankin and Eight Market Drive. On a more pleasant note, we, the Landfill Authority and the city of Marquette, as you well know, had a joint meeting last week, and we, the Landfill Authority, represent twenty-two municipalities in our county, and city of Marquette obviously being the largest partner in it. And we are really encouraged with the entertainment of having the recycling with the city of Marquette, and the city of Marquette and the Landfill Authority working together. Devil's always in the detail, but I'm sure our board and your board are able to work out, and then, of course, both sides of the attorneys will add some more conflict in there, as they usually do, but we'll fix that in some form or matter of another. But anyways, I just wanted to address in saying thank you for allowing us to work together and make it really green for all of our citizens in our community. And on the other hand, it was really unique and different to sit on that side of the bench last week. It's a whole different perspective than being on this side. So I thank you for doing a fabulous job for the entire community. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lenkenen. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? No one else wishing to address the commission? We'll close that portion of the meeting and move on with the rest of our agenda. Next item is the consent agenda. We have five items on the consent agenda: minutes, bills payable, an amendment to the YMC lease agreement, obsolete equipment, computer equipment sale, and renewal of a networks port agreement, Nano Six Technologies. Fellow commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to accept the consent agenda as written.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to approve the consent agenda as written. Any further comment, Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Commissioner Ryan?
No, nothing to add. Routine matters.
Any other commissioners? Any guest commissioners desiring to comment on the item? Okay. Hearing none, I call for the vote. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item is new business. We have the North Country Trail Association Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the background information?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background. At the November 25th, 2013, city commission meeting, the North Country Trail Association, NCTA, Representative Lorena Jinkerson provided a presentation on the North Country National Scenic Trail and proposed the city consider becoming an NCTA Trail Town. It was explained that an NCTA Trail Town is any community through which the trail passes that supports hikers with services, promotes the trail to its citizens, and embraces the trail as a resource to be protected and celebrated. Trail towns are built on a relationship between a town, the trail, and its volunteers. By partnering through the NCTA Trail Town program can grow awareness and support for the trail, improve access and information to get members of the community active in the outdoors, and boost the economic benefits by providing recognition of the health of the environment, the people, and the economy. Ms. Jinkerson also made the presentation to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board at their October 2013 meeting. The board unanimously supported moving the initiative forward to the city commission for review and consideration. Due to the commission's response at the presentation, staff worked with the NCTA and the city attorney to develop an agreement required for the NCTA Trail Town designation attached as a memorandum of understanding that defines the purpose and obligations for NCTA and the city. Upon approving the agreement, the city will recognize, will be recognized on North Country National Scenic Trail website and all publications as a Trail Town. Trail Town signs will be placed at the gateways of the city, and urban trail markers will be placed throughout the city's bike path, which defines the trail. Fiscal effect: costs associated with installation and maintenance of the Trail Town and Urban Trail marker signage. Recommendation: approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Marquette and North Country Trail Association and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item? We do have Commissioner Ryan.
I'd like to move we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Marquette and North Country Trail Association and direct the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Marquette and North Country Trail Association, direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Any further comments, Commissioner Ryan?
Just that this is very much who we are. We are a trail city. We're into biking, we're into hiking, we're into everything trails stand for. It's a small financial commitment on our part. We're also jointly agreeing with the association to promote this. I think the promotion will receive nationally far outweighs the amount of promotion we're going to provide locally, so I think it's a real plus for the city of Marquette.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I agree with those comments, and I also would like to commend the local group to, because of their efforts, to have this accomplished. And also, the memorandum of understanding is quite clear what our responsibilities are and what yours are, and it's just excellently written, very clear, understandable, and appreciate the national organization putting that together, and it's a very, very nice thing for us to do in the city, along with partnering with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I just wanted to observe, again, what a wonderful example this is, of how many groups there are in the city, volunteer groups that work so hard to make the city a better place. And it's just very heartening to see that. I commend you for the work that you're doing, and just, again, it's just a really nice feeling to see these things moving on with the volunteer efforts behind them. Thank you.
The commissioners have any comments or questions? We do have Ms. Jinkerson here to be answering any questions. Any honorary commissioners would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this issue? Okay. Seeing none, I guess I'll move the call for the vote on the motion. It was moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Coyne, to approve the memorandum of understanding, et cetera. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority License and User Agreement for Recycling Collection Facility and Associated Recycling Agreement. City clerk, could you read the background material on this item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background: The city commission has held a series of work sessions and special meetings to discuss recycling and landfill diversion programs and to consider partnering in these pursuits with other municipalities, businesses, community groups, and Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, or MCSWMA. The first joint meeting with the MCSWMA board was held on January 11th, 2012, while the most recent was held on January 23rd, 2014. The MCSWMA would like to establish a recycling collection facility at the old Flink Farm site to facilitate collection of recyclables. The site is part of the vacant city property inventory and has been used by the Department of Public Works as a material storage area for the past several years. The recycling collection facility will be part of a hub-and-spoke concept that will aid local municipalities and other local entities in getting recyclable materials to market. Fiscal effect: The MCSWMA will assume all ownership and operational expenses associated with the recycling collection facility and will recover costs through a material processing fee. The city will be eligible for revenue sharing through the sale of recyclables. The processing fee and recycling revenue will be accounted for in the establishment of the city's monthly solid waste fee for FY 1415. Recommendation: Move consideration of the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority License and User Agreement for the recycling collection facility and associated recycling agreement to unfinished business at the next regular meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Fellow commissioners, what is your desire with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we, consideration of the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority License and User Agreement for Recycling Collection Facility and Associated Recycling Agreement to unfinished business at the next regular meeting.
Is there a second for this motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to move consideration of the Solid Waste Management Authority License and User Agreement for recycling to, and associated recycling agreement to unfinished business at the next regular meeting. Any further comment, Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I think it's important for people to understand, this is kind of a chicken-and-egg situation we have going here. We have to approve this. The county solid waste authority has to approve it independently. You know, there still may be some discussion back and forth. We had an excellent meeting, as you heard earlier. There was good discussion, but we have to get the ball rolling, and so it may turn out to be exactly what we talked about the other night, or there could be some changes. But it's an opportunity for us to work together with the solid waste authority. What this really, hopefully, is going to mean in the long term, and we've had people come before this commission in the past who are very interested in promoting recycling to the highest degree. And we do some good recycling now, but there's also been an effort to better recycle organic material, and this could allow that to happen in a very effective way. And, you know, this, you know, besides the opportunity to be green, it also eliminates use of space in the landfill, which is very expensive, and so it's a very positive development, and hopefully, city staff and commission and county solid waste authority staff and commission can come to a final agreement on this so it can happen. I think it's a very positive step.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Stonehouse, do you have anything further?
Well, I would only add to that, that this really is an opportunity for Marquette to move forward from a sustainability point of view, and to do it in a very dramatic and a very long-lasting fashion. I made the comment when we had the meeting with the good folks from the solid waste board here, that, you know, we can't keep digging holes in the ground and throwing our stuff in it, and indeed, we cannot. And this is one way that we can make that problem much, much better. The agreement may change a little bit from what I think we're going to pass tonight, but procedurally, the city has to do it twice, and this is reading number one, and then next meeting, or a meeting soon after would be reading number two. So again, I very strongly support this, and thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Coyne?
In follow-up to Commissioner Stonehouse's comments, I think the meeting was very helpful. It really, I think, is the beginning of a great partnership agreement, and to be more specific, right now, the citizens recycle about forty percent of their recyclable material. This plan, I think, has the possibility of the community recycling upwards of eighty to ninety percent, and by doing so, we would extend the life of the landfill a hundred years. And I happened to be involved thirty years ago in trying to locate the landfill, and it was probably the most difficult thing I've ever dealt with. And I would hate to think of doing it even a hundred years from now, how expensive it's going to be. And it was very expensive when we did it thirty years ago, and without the cooperation of Sands Township, this would, we'd be still taking trash to Daftor, as incredible as that sounds for people who, young folks who are sitting here. We used to take our trash all the way to Daftor, which is on I-75 near St. Ignis. Talk about expensive. Well, doing, citing a landfill is profoundly expensive, so this really makes sense. One of the concerns I had was, at the meeting, the typical thing came up of, well, this is why Marquette, what about all the other townships and cities? And the question, to me, was satisfactorily addressed, is that the solid waste authority, this group, will offer the same deal to every other township and city in terms of sharing the profitability of the mounts that are from, that are gotten from recycling. I don't see any downside to it personally, and the city of Marquette is giving eight-and-a-half acres for this venture to be used, and that's all. I mean, the rest of everybody else is basically equal, so I would urge them to really step up and support this plan, because I think it really has great potential for saving us a lot of money and making this a greener place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Senator Biden?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take the opportunity, maybe, to ask our guest commissioners if they'd like to reflect on this, not just because it's their last chance during this particular agenda session, but this is something that, for me, I know really speaks to the future. It's something that I've heard other commission members through the course of the work sessions in the joint special meeting last week opine on how important it is to get our youth engaged in this early on. I know Director Aho had mentioned that we're looking to incorporate this in the local school curriculums to give children as young as the fourth-grade attendees an opportunity to go out and tour the facilities, see what happens to their trash, and why it's so important that we take steps now to make sure that we're living in a sustainable way. And since we have some of the future potential representatives of this government sitting with us tonight, I was hoping to maybe get them to share a few words about how they feel about recycling and managing this kind of issue.
I think it's something very, I think it's something very important for Marquette and something really positive for the future, and a hundred more years of space we can use in our landfills is really good, something we can improve upon, too, in the future.
This, planning for the future now, most important thing we can be doing other than maintaining what's already going now. As special interest to me, say, with the farming community we have around us, if we want to become sustainable, we have to produce our own food for the future, if we want to be a sustainable community as a whole. And what interests me about this recycling proposition is the possibility of recycling organic matter, which is lost, and greenhouse gases, if we're there concerned, are released. Methane being more effective of trapping sunlight than carbon dioxide, and much of that comes from the decomposition in landfills of organic matter. So if we can reutilize all of this from the twenty-one-thousand people in the surrounding area, just in the city and the counties, we can really have an impact bolstering the farm growth of the area with fertilizer and just looking to the future, extending the life of our current landfills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Since I'm being encouraged to say something, I'd just like to say that I also approve of this because it'll help save the environment, and I think it'll be really beneficial to the community.
Thank you. Any other comments by any commissioners or honorary commissioners? Okay. I guess I get the last word. I think this is a great idea. It's, you know, we've been fortunate to have a solid waste management authority that provides us an extremely efficient and responsible landfill. And frankly, you know, at one time, we were literally daft when we carried our garbage to Daftor, and I think this is just one more step that will assure our future, because it, as Mayor Protem Stonehouse mentions, we dig a hole and throw our garbage in it, which is just nonsense. There's so much that we could take out of the waste stream and recycle, we could put back to effective use, and we could help it, use it to support the effort of our garbage collection, garbage disposal. And I think we can work along with landfill and come up with an associate agreement. The agreement we have now may change. The attorneys can sit down and review, the staff can, and the landfill billboard, and I'm confident that we can reach an agreement that, you know, could be a model for the rest of the county. And so, without further ado, I guess we do have to vote on this. We're not really approving the agreement as such, other than moving on to the next reading. It is a work in progress. So the motion was made by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Mayor Protem Stonehouse, to So, the motion was made by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Mayor Protem Stonehouse, to approve the agreement for consideration and unfinished business at our next regular meeting, or a meeting as, as necessary to, when we get a final agreement. All in favor, the motions say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed in motion say no, the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is comments from commission, and again, this includes our honorary commissioners. I'll start at my far right, Commissioner Reynolds.
Um, I just wanted to thank the student council for joining us tonight, and I hope more groups like you guys come out and decide to join our meetings, and maybe even sit there and make public comment. Also, I wanted to thank Commissioner Ryan for bringing up Saya's Naimi last meeting, because I didn't know about, as much about it as he did, and made me aware, and the hospital staff that was involved, and the citizens involved with that, it's wonderful, and I'm proud to say I'm a resident of the city of Marquette.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Ryan, or Commissioner Reynolds, excuse me, now Commissioner Ryan.
He's Reynolds, I'm Ryan.
Yes.
You know, we've been here for a while together. You know, and in a sense, I really admire the comments from our, our young commissioners tonight, since there was not a lot of information provided about what we were even talking about with the solid waste discussion. Commissioner Coyne provided some good information, but hopefully, going forward, this would be a situation where people can put organic into their recycling, and, and it will be collected as part of their trash collection, not just as a, as a drop-off site as we have now. And that could make a huge difference going forward, so it really is a, it really is an interesting plan, and e- even those people watching tonight have, have gotten only bits and pieces of what it is, but, but we will, this is, as someone pointed out, this is just a first introduction of it, so that it can go forward and can be discussed by the solid waste group, so certainly more details will be provided as we go forward. Commissioner, Mayor Naimi mentioned the cold, you know, it's kind of interesting, it has been extremely cold, but, you know, life goes on. Life goes on in, in the city of Marquette and in Marquette County, the Caymanan Racers did their thing. It was interesting to see some of the television coverage with people coming in with white beards, white not because they were old, but white because they were covered with snow and frost. But as, as was pointed out at the last meeting, so many of our city staff are out working in this kind of weather, and all kinds of jobs. And, you know, we certainly admire the, the job they do, and, and, and want to thank them for, for their efforts. And to all those people who are forced to work outside in this kind of weather, it's a tough assignment. I always had inside jobs, so that worked pretty well. I, I guess I also wanted to just briefly comment on the harbor advisory, harbor advisory committee report, excellent report. It's a great committee, they do a lot of good things. I think it's a legitimate question that we have to address going forward, and that is how broad is their responsibility? Is it the waterfront, or is it just the harbor? And, you know, we have a work session coming up on committees, so hopefully, that will be included as part of the discussion when we have that, when we have that meeting, because I think it's a, it's a very good question, and one that, that deserves an answer. Certainly, as a community, we have to look at the whole waterfront. You know, it, it's all part of who we are and what we are, and, you know, whether it's this committee or another committee that does it, that's something that has to be answered, but obviously, this committee has done an excellent job with the, with the work they've done so far, so we certainly would want to consider that, or I would. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Would our honorary commissioner care to make some last comments?
Sure. I just want to say, thanks for the city for allowing the student council to be here. I think it's mutually beneficial, and I know I learned a lot today about how the city of Marquette works, and it really helps me out as a student to understand this stuff, and as a citizen, to know what's going on, and I just want to say thanks.
Thank you very much, and I might point out at this point that we don't mean to be in plight by not introducing our honorary commissioners, but since they are young people, we want to preserve their, their privacy and, and not put their, their name out over the television, but even though I'd like to, but I, I can't. Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you. I would like to comment to Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Yell, just to remind them of the comments made by our three honorary commissioners. We didn't put them up to that, they didn't know this was coming, and I think that really would hopefully be a message to your board and to other boards throughout the county of what the youth feel, how important this is, because us geezers are not going to be here in a hundred years, but they probably won't either, but at least eighty of them, they'll probably be here. So it's really important to them, and that, that was a spontaneous thing, I think it would be worth sharing to increase the value of this agreement. I want to thank all of the honorary commissioners for coming. It was our pleasure, at least my pleasure, and I think I can say that for all the commissioners, to have you here, get to know you, to, you represent really a very good representation of youth, and I appreciate that very much. I, I would hope that you would remember this opportunity, even though it's just one little thing sitting here for an hour and a half, but to see the tremendous number of volunteers that help this city run, and to see the commissioners here who basically are doing this as a public service and a love of their community. And I think, as you grow up, I think, I would hope that you would see how important that is to make the place that you live, whether it's Marquette or anywhere, a better place, and really appreciate your willingness to do this. I, I was telling the city manager, when I was a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior in high school, there was no way I could do this, so it just shows what quality folks you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Would you like to make some comments?
Yeah.
Very good.
I'd just like to thank the city commission for having us, because it really is a great opportunity, and I really, I'm proud that I'm from Marquette, because it truly is a great city, and I'm glad to see what good hands it's in right now, because we're getting from you guys, and we'll, we'll definitely have a good city to build off of. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, would the honorary commissioner, Jason Commissioner Kim Benzey, would like to make one last comment?
I guess I'd just like to say thank you, and it was interesting to see how things work on this side of the desk, and to see other people's reactions and their opinions on the things you guys talk about. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Thank you. I'd like to just kind of piggyback off of what Commissioner Coyne said, and Commissioner Ryan, and Commissioner Reynolds, and that is just to thank our students for being here. Two thoughts, one, to the women who are up here with us, often, women are the ones who lead government up until high school, and then the trend kind of shifts, and you can look up here at those of us who are commissioners and see that there's only two women and five men, and a little over a year ago, it was all men. So I guess what I would just like to say is, I hope that you continue in leadership roles, whether it's government or serving, but it is important to, to have our perspective, I think, and to also represent how we tend to see things as women, and also to thank the gentlemen who are up here with us tonight, I do appreciate your comments, you're bright thinkers, I feel safe that our future's with you. And also, one thought too, as I look out into the audience a lot, I see a lot of people who grew up in Marquette, who have stayed here, and one thing I can tell you, as someone who left only briefly and came back, is that it's nice to, to leave and get away, but there are so many people, and I think you'll find this as you get older, that are trying to find their way back here, because we do live in a great community, and it is a place we're all proud of, so thank you for being part of it. The Pigs in Heat Fire Relief Fund, I know it's a little bit of housekeeping, but I would like to say I had an employee who was affected, whose house did catch on fire, and the response and the outreach that our fire department and our police department gave him was just phenomenal, so I'd like to thank them. I remember going to these Pigs in Heat hockey games since I was little, it's truly, it's truly important, an important part of our community. Fireworks, I'd like to thank Tom Baldini, I think it's a great plan, hopefully, we can get this, get this moving. Just to give the commission update, they appointed me to the Regional Climate Change and Adaption Committee. I did attend my first meeting of community leaders, and whether you believe in global warming or climate change, that really wasn't the purpose of this committee. What we're here to do is to look at how climate change will affect us, especially at the municipal level, snowplowing, disaster relief. You know, we looked at a lot of slides last year, if you remember, Duluth went through a torrential rainfall, and that was one billion dollars in infrastructure to their city, and they're still dealing with the cost of all the silt and runoff, so it's very real, they, these are things we as a city need to start planning and looking for. And of course, we did look at a lot of grant funding out there, grant funding that can help us in other ways with infrastructure for our city, so it's very positive, and thankful to be on that committee, and we'll keep you updated. The Hartwood property, I did, I was asked by a few community members to kind of report on some numbers, and I think the original numbers I gave them, as far as the interest we're paying on the land, were low. I originally thought our bond payments plus interest were about eighty-one thousand. This past year, the city paid four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-three dollars for that property in bond payments and taxes. We also are paying in protest, you know, taxes to the township right now, and I just want to say that I do hope my fellow commissioners will support the planning commission, they want to bring back the community planning on this large tract of land, I think we need to get back there. For the financial sake, the numbers I just reported, you know, if we want to hold other members that certainly draw off of the same tax base as us to a high standard, I think we need to do the same, and I think there's a lot of people out there that would like to see us really start planning this property. And once the rec authority comes back, I do hope we step it up and support the planning commission, because what I think it's going to do, if we wait much longer, is it's going to divide our community. We're starting to spot zone on it, and we're starting to do things that we promised the community, the public process, so I do hope we can get back to that. And to end it on a light note, Kaufman Auditorium will be doing the Kaufman Follies. It's a community event to get, hopefully, some of the local celebrities, maybe some elected officials, if I can twist their arms, to get up on stage, the twenty-sixth of February at seven PM. We are looking for talent and acts, certainly, high school members too. All the money raised will go to Kaufman programming and capital improvements that benefit not only our, our high school students, but certainly all of our community groups that rent there. And if you don't have a talent, we have lots of people who have volunteered to put you in their act, so you might want to avoid me for a while, but I will be asking, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kim Benzey, and thank you for the warning. Commissioner Campana?
I'm in a hurry to get out of here. First, I'd just like to thank the students for volunteering to be here. Volunteers are what make a city Marquette is great, because they have lots of volunteers, and hopefully, these students, it's a pleasure to be with them, they're, they're ambitious young men and women, and hopefully, they'll be sitting up here someday. I would also, as I drive around town, I see firemen, policemen, public works, workers working in this weather, and, you know, somehow, it'd be nice to stop and say thanks to them for, you know, putting up with what they're doing, it's, you know, I'd hate to do it, never had to do it, and I'd hate to do it, so they're, they're really, you know, deserve to be commended. Lastly, the harbor advisory committee, a very good presentation. I know that they work, they have a lot of issues on their plate, and they're doing a very good job, and, and I hope they continue to do as they have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Honorary commissioner? Any comments?
Well, again, I'd just like to repeat what my peers have said, I'm so grateful that the student council gets this kind of opportunity, because although I'm not in any government classes in high school right now, it's just something not a lot of people my age can say that they were able to participate in, so thanks again.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Couple of quick things, if I can, thanks to the hack for the great presentation and the forward-leaning of the, of the committee. A lot of good stuff being done, a lot of good stuff yet to be done, and I, I look forward to it. Congratulations to the Noki, being able to pull off a great race under, I don't know, sub-Arctic conditions, it's, it'll be one that the folks who race will remember, I think, for a long time. But not only the Noki organizers, but certainly the, the hordes of volunteers that are out there that really made the race work, certainly deserve all of our credit. Along with that, it is cold outside, we are certainly having problems with pipes freezing. City manager, do you have the current frost level?
I do, Your Honor, it's at about seventy-two inches, which is about the depth rated for our infrastructure, so we are definitely at the point in time when people should be paying attention to the public service announcements and all the communications coming from City Hall.
And I was going to emphasize on that, that our DPW page on the city website does have an entire page of information and instructions on freezing water pipes, how to prevent it. I encourage our citizens, go onboard, take a review of it, and really, one ounce of prevention certainly is worth a pound of cure, so I encourage you to do that. Lastly, just a little piece of housekeeping, all city bond payments are part of our budget, and they all are available as part of the annual financial report, which I believe is on the website, and I have to go there, find annual budget financial reports, and they're all laid out, everything, we're paying for everything, over time, when those particular bonds come due, and when they will die away too, because we paid them off, so again, take a look if you have any questions regarding that. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Honorary commissioner to my left, would you please like to make some final comments?
Yes, I would like to thank the Marquette City Commission for this opportunity. As minors, we can volunteer in the community, but it's very difficult to become involved in the government, and this is a great way that we've been able to do that, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
And thank, thank you. Thank all of the honorary commissioners, it's, it's certainly been our pleasure, as I mentioned at the onset of the meeting, and it may sound trite, but the, the youth are the, the future of our community. You've had a good example, you've had a chance to hear them, and I think my prediction at the beginning is, our, our future is in very good hands, and it's, we have some outstanding examples here, and, and they are just representative of the youth of the community. They are, they are not all the youth of the community, there's, there's many other youth out there who are, who are equally as, as capable and equally as deserving, and, and I thank them for, for gracing us with their presence tonight. And without further ado, I will let an honorary commissioner hit the gavel for, oh, I'm sorry. City manager, do you have something to do, say? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I only wanted to offer two quick comments. Per our custom, the mayor pro tem is responsible for the weather, and so I know it's tempting to believe, and, and a lot of people tend to, that we're all knowing and all seeing sometimes on government, that's not the case, but in this particular one, if you'd like to thank anybody for two consecutive school days, to the honorary commissioner's president, it would be the mayor pro tem. But on my point, I'd also like to thank the, the students for coming out this evening, they've had five days off, they certainly had had to brave the weather and other, other travails to come out this evening, but it's great to have you, and we hope to see you again very soon. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that on Tuesday, February fourth, which is next Tuesday, from four to seven, in the Peter White Public Library downstairs, we're going to be having the annual city open house, and it's an opportunity for all the residents and the members of our community, come by, see what it is that city government does for you, not just the staff departments, but also the advisory committees, our partner organizations like the Marquette Senior High Student Council, ASNMU, and other community organizations. It's a great time to come down and see firsthand not only what your tax dollars are paying for, but what you can do to participate in your community, so it's a great time, please consider coming down next Tuesday, February fourth, four to seven, Peter White Public Library basement to our open house. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, city manager. Now, our honorary commissioner can gavel the meeting to an end, and we are adjourned. Thank you.